Anyone here who want a cookie? We've got cookies and candy up here.
Library.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the meeting. This is just now. Calling to order the meeting of the Littleton zoning Board of Appeals. It's just after 7:30. It's December 12, 2013. We're in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Building, 37 Great Road, Littleton, Massachusetts. And we're here tonight on a hearing. I request for modification of...
15 Great Road LLC.
15 Great Road LLC. 15 Great Road 2 LLC on the comprehensive permit for the project at 15 Great Road in Littleton, Mass. The way this is going to be conducted, first of all, I would like to ask everyone here to sign in before they leave. You don't have to make a mass exodus now. We could either pass the paper around if you haven't already signed in or do so before you leave. So we have a record of who is here at the proceedings. Secondly, the way this works is we're going to hear from the applicant first. Board members will then ask any questions that they have. Then we'll hear from town boards, departments, committees, maybe town council, maybe our consultant. And then we will ask any other interested parties who are here today to make comment. In each instance, please address your questions through the chair. Everybody will have a chance to listen and be heard. I would personally just like a quick show of hands as to who is here in the capacity of their respective boards or departments. I see familiar faces, and I don't know if you're here as an observer, or a neighbor, or in a butter, or if you're here for the board or department. Okay, so then I'll identify in the room in the first row. At the table, we have Leslie French, who's going to help make the presentation for the applicant. And then we have Town Council Chris Heap, Town Council Tom Harrington, Ed Marshant, who is our consultant, and David Hale, who is the applicant or presenting for the applicant. And then we have...
You want to mention who the standing members are of the board and the alternate members?
Yeah. In the second row, we have Building Inspector Roland Bernier. Beside him is Keith Bergman, Town Administrator. And I guess the rest of the row are consultants to the applicant and representatives for the applicant, and they'll be identified as they stand to speak. We have also representing a board or a department, Selectman Alec McCurdy. I'm sorry, to his, to his right would be Chief Scott Wojinski, Fire Chief Scott Wojinski. Anyone else here I didn't... Oh, and in the back, we have Selectman Jenna Brownson, who's standing right now. I hope you'll take a seat because you're going to get tired. And then I think that's everybody I need to recognize, board and department. The zoning Board of Appeals is identified with the place cards in front of them, but I will tell you that the standing members and the regular members are Jeffrey Yates, just raising hands so they can see where I started, John Cantino, Bill Farnsworth, myself, Cheryl Gould, and Cheryl Hollinger. And then our alternate members, Alan Bell, Rod Stewart, Mark Sauce here, and Patrick Joyce. Okay, would you like to get started, please, Mr. Hale?
Yes, for the record, I'm David Hale with 15 Great Road LLC, and I appreciate the board's time and for everyone who's here tonight. And actually, I'd like to thank Leslie and Sue in particular, who kind of worked around Clark to get all the plans and the presentation material, et cetera, together. So with that, so the agenda for tonight's meeting is a relatively long agenda, and I cut it into two sections. I'm going to talk, and I'll try and get through this quickly so there's plenty of time for questions from the board and from the public. I'll briefly talk about the reasons for change, and then I'll talk about the changes. And I'm going to talk about the changes in terms of how they might affect health, safety, environmental issues, and reasons that you might have to not approve the project, which I think at the end of that, you'll see that there really would be no basis for not approving the changes. I think I'll try and make that simple. And then, secondly, I'll talk about the project in two parts. The rental portion, we'll go through the buildings, the unit mix, the handicap accessible, handicap adaptable, affordable plan. We'll then switch over to the ownership portion of the project, which will emphasize will be a consumer-driven project, that where the, where the sales are based from a model and are built on a build-to-suit basis, so that the ultimate product mix and ultimate unit designs are driven by consumer preference. And I'll talk about the, we'll talk about the variety of products and how they, that we'll offer, and how they fit a variety of demographics that are relevant in today's world. We'll talk about the affordable units of the plan and how we came up with the affordable pricing, and then we can talk about next steps as a group. And with me here this evening is also my partner, Mark Brooks, Lou Levine, who represents us, Bill Murray and Sue from places, and our consultant on the ownership portion, Mark Gallagher. And they're all available to answer questions and may participate at some point. So we're asking for changes to the project, and these changes are required to make the project economically feasible. And economically feasible in today's world means financeable. So the, the things that made the prior plan not economically feasible was that the rental plan that we designed required outside institutional equity and debt, and we were not able to attract that. And the, and we brought, and I think the neighbors can attest, they saw me drive over the property a lot of times with a lot of potential investors from a variety of different institutions. And the feedback that we got was that there were too many townhomes. And the, the specific issue was that within 25 to 30 miles of here, there weren't townhome properties like ours that had recently sold. And so, you know, I dragged, you know, a dozen institutional investors, you know, guys and gals that were in their 30s and 40s, who said, "Well, I'm going to take this to committee." And yes, there are other projects like this that one investor, Avalon, owns, but none of them have sold, and therefore, you know, it's going to be a problem. So the other, the other feedback that we got was that we had moved away from units that addressed the aging demographic. We started out with our initial proposal. We had units serviced by an elevator. We moved away from that, and it bothered the institutional investor group. We're also outside the 128 Ring. The institutional investor world tends to work like lemmings. They, they all think, this group thing, and there's a, there's a greater interest in investing in the urban core and in towns that touch 128. I have to say, at this stage of the cycle, that's changing, and it's moving in our direction. But the last thing is, last summer, I hired Nina Schwartzchild, who is a prominent affordable housing developer and developing, development consultant. And she and I put together an application to DHC to get subsidies for the affordable units. And we, we had a meeting with Kate Racer, who's the highest level non-appointed, politically appointed person at DHCD. And, you know, she liked the project, but at the end of the day, she said, "Look, your, your unit mix, your affordable units," which is what she would be subsidizing, "are too large." She said, "It's very unusual for government subsidy programs, for instance, to subsidize garages." So she said, "You would have to redesign this so that garages were optional, because the taxpayer's not going to afford that. It's not required for affordable housing." And it just didn't make sense for us to try and make the subsidy thing work, given, given that feedback. So what we've done is we have... We've essentially created a project where, and by a project, I mean an entire project, 40B and 40A, where each segment of the project is smaller and financeable on its own. So our ability to make this feasible is because we can get debt financing for an ownership portion and the rental portion, and we have a fairly long list of buyers that are interested and ready to purchase this portion of the project. So essentially, we've created a format here where with internal equity and a little bit of local private equity, we can finance this project.
David, I'm going to ask you to put that on the easel. Turn it sideways so everyone can see it. Just turn it a little bit more so the audience can see it. Leslie, I know you don't have it in color, but can you just put up that page that it shows that so everyone can see it?
Can you tell us what page it is on our...
No, she's got it on that.
That I don't think is in there.
Thank you.
That's a beautiful thing.
So David, if you would just, one more time, point, maybe I'll do it at the same time here. Did you get it? So here, okay. So this is...
So, so the...
So what do you, what do you want to do first?
What was your point?
So my, my point is that, that we've, we've developed a project. It's really three projects. It's 56 acres, consists of 24 40As, single-family homes, and it will consist of 56 ownership condominiums and 144 rental units. And by making each segment financeable or marketable on its own, we've created a project that is internally economically feasible. And, and that is what is driving our request for these changes. Can I go back to...
So can I ask a quick question?
No, 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 let me finish the presentation, please.
Clarification.
Go ahead.
What you're saying is the portion on the left, that is going to, you're proposing that be the ownership portion, is that correct?
Yeah, I think if you, if you follow along, I'll make all that clear.
Let him go through his whole presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
So a couple other things that are driving us to this particular project design. One is that our Federal Reserve has pumped a trillion dollars of liquidity into the economy to replate the real estate market, and it's worked. And, you know, two years ago, the ownership idea on this property probably would not have worked. Today, there's a pent-up demand for those units, and we are very, very confident that the ownership portion will be successful. Third, institutional investors, bankers, like to finance traditional garden-style apartments. That, in the rental world, you know, I learned the hard way, is, is what's financeable. It's more cost-effective on a per-unit basis to build. And lastly, we heard loud and clear that the demographics aging, institutional investors like to invest in buildings that have elevators that can handle people with ambulatory issues. So those are the, those are the reasons that we have asked for the changes that we are asking for this evening. So the changes are, from a, from a unit count basis, we started out with an approved project of 190 units, of which 48 were one-bed, 78 were two-bed, and 64 were three-bed. The changes that we're asking for are to increase the number of one-beds to 66, which is a 38% increase in the number of one-beds, to keep the number of two-beds the same, and to reduce the number of three-beds from 64 to 56, which is a decrease of 13%. Overall, the unit count increases by 5%, and the bedroom count decreases by 1 and 1/2%. So these changes in and of themselves, in terms of changes in unit mix and count, are not substantial changes. In the entirety, the changes we are asking for are substantial changes. So as I said, we are breaking the project into an ownership portion and a rental portion. In order to do that, and to make it more financeable and user-friendly, particularly for the, the owner and users, we are going to do an A&R plan and create three lots. Lots one and two will be for the ownership, and lot three will be for the rental.
That one, just that one. That's lot one, and then lot two, and that's the rental lot.
So in terms of health, safety, and environment, in terms of our, our state permit, our highway access permit is not affected. We've sent a letter to the Department of Transportation, and I shared that letter, and we got an email back saying that, no, no, no issues there. Our groundwater discharge permit, we're essentially going to produce the same number of gallons per day, and there is, there is no impact on our groundwater discharge permit. There is no impact on our conservation management permit. Our open space and conservation land is unaffected. In our stormwater management, we expect to have less stormwater, but we will need to revise our order of condition, and we will do so soon after we get through this, this process. In terms of internal design, in terms of safety for, safety vehicles, all the truck turns work, the hydrant locations have been signed off on, and we have continued with this plan to provide parking for parents waiting for the bus. In terms of changes to physical waivers, we will need a waiver of frontage requirements for lots two and three, which we didn't need before. Our height waiver is going to go from, well, increase by four feet. Maximum height was 49 feet, and we need 53 feet to accommodate our three garden-style buildings. There will be no height waivers on lots one and two, and there are no setback waivers, period. That should say one, two, or three, and I apologize for that. So there, there will be no setback waivers. The sign waivers will change, and that work is in progress. I think what I, what I proposed in your package was, it looks like it was, it was overkill, and I think as, as we're quickly trying to refine our sign package, we'll work that out by next week. Oops, sorry. So again, in terms of sign waivers, we're working on the designs, but these signs, I want you to point to the signs, yes. Those are, are essentially very similar to what was previously approved. The sign at the, at the entrance, sort of monument sign, is being redesigned to accommodate the fact that it's really going to be marketing an ownership project and a rental project. It will be about the same size as the previous design, and we expect to have a complete design next week. Go ahead. Oh, actually, I'm going to have to... In terms of changes in the, in the site design, our original plan had 48 units on what will become lot, lot one, and we had 88, 80 units on the, kind of, on the hill in between the flat and our neighbors. So in...
Planning board is 307.
In our new design, there will be 24 units in the front, and the blue units are ownership units, and there will be 32 units where there were 80. And then there'll be 144 units in garden-style buildings closest to Nagog Park. So a couple other things to... Does it not work at all? What are you trying to do? I'm trying to show, show these units right here. So we had 16 units essentially along the, sort of, with the back facing 119, and we'll now have seven units where there were 16 before. So in, in terms of overall site design criteria, as the state regulations look at it, the idea is that our, that worked, our larger buildings, our garden-style buildings, essentially will look like they're an extension of Nagog Park. And then you, you move up the hill, and, you know, we have a ownership portion where the density is basically four units an acre, and then we have a vegetated buffer, and then we have the, the Grist Mill neighborhood. So you're kind of going from the Nagog mixed-use project, you're kind of extending that, going into a less dense ownership project, and that kind of buffers the, the adjacent neighborhood. So in terms of what the project will look like, this is kind of a bird's-eye view from the south side of 119, looking at the first phase of the ownership project. So in terms of how the project fits together, this is a, just a top-down view. It, okay, kind of shows the phases and the villages and the clustering and, and the So this is an animated shot, or cartoon, whatever you want to call it, computer-generated shot of, of the entire project from kind of a bird's-eye view on the south side of So in terms of our neighborhood agreement, there are no changes or effects relative to our neighborhood agreement. We met with all the direct debaters before we came in and made these changes, and these proposed changes meet all of the parameters of our existing agreement in terms of buffers, location of accessory buildings, location of larger buildings, and, and maximum heights. So we, we meet all of the requirements of that agreement that we negotiated. In terms of the host community agreement, there will be no, no changes to the host community agreement. Section 14 of the host community agreement states that in no event shall 15 Great Road be obligated to maintain more than 100 units, and that obligation, that 100-unit obligation lasts until January 1 of 2031. So in terms of how this project will stack up, you get to count 100% of the rental units, and you get to count 25% of the ownership units. So initially... So initially, we'll, we'll have 148, 158 units in the subsidized housing inventory. Our proposed change to condition 52 would allow us to convert building three, and if we were to do that, in the future, we'd end up with 96 units counted as rentals, 12 counted as ownership in units in the garden condominium, which would be building three, and then 14 detached for 122. So what we proposed in all cases exceeds the requirement of the host community agreement. Now, just to, to review, the town is currently at 8.45% in its subsidized housing inventory without our project. So with our project, and I, I essentially used Keith's numbers from a presentation that was done sometime last year, or earlier this year. So the subsidized housing inventory with the changes would change, so the town would be at, would have 449 units and would be at 13.04%. And in 2020, the denominator will change with the census, and based on, on Keith's projections of how many units would be added, the town should be at about 3,894 units. And this project would keep the town at about 11.5%. If we were to convert in the future building three to a, to a condominium building, that would drop to 12% through 2020 and to 10.6% beyond 2020. So one of the, one of the other changes that actually we're not asking from this board, but is a necessity, is that we will be changing subsidizing agencies. Mass Development is not due homeownership. So it, it is a necessity for us to move to what's called the New England Fund, which is, which is administered by Mass Housing. And New England Fund essentially is, enables us to access local banks for both the rental and the ownership portion. They have to be federal home loan bank, banks, and Mass Housing is the only one that administers that program. We've done this before in the reverse. In 2007, we got approval for a condominium building in Tewksbury, looked at the housing market and how it was changing negatively for, for ownership, and so we started out at Mass Housing. We switched to rental, we, we got the town to approve substantial change from ownership to rental. We went to Mass Housing Partnership, started the project, and then Bank of New England became, not Bank of New England, Bank of American, 2008, became Shaky Credit, and we ended up going to Mass Development and Enterprise Bank. So we're used to doing this, this switch in subsidizing agencies. But the process starts with an approval by this board, and then we will apply to Mass Housing for a new site approval letter and a final approval in one process that's expedited. And we have met with Mass Housing, we've given them a complete presentation on the project, we've answered a lot of questions, and as soon as we are through with this process, we will deliver a giant amount of paperwork and, and, and get that project going. So the requirements are that we complete the application, they do an all-inclusive review, including our budgets, our plans, our state permits, and when I say they review the plans, they review everything about the plans, you know, from sustainability to our compliance with Energy Star and the Energy Code. They will require us to have two regulatory agreements, one for the rental and, and one for the ownership. They are responsible for the administration of all the regulations around affordable units, their location, their design, their pricing for both the sale and the rental portion of the project. They will require, in order for us to get final approval, that we have debt commitments from banks on, for each of the rental and the sale portion, and they will administer and review the cost allocation between the two projects, as well as the cost certification. So just the specifics on the rental portion of the, the project, there's 144 units, 66 will be one beds, 66 will be two beds, and 12 will be three beds. There will be seven handicap accessible units, and there'll be 137 handicap adaptable units. So what that means is that if, if all of the handicap units are occupied and a handicap user comes to us, we can make any one of those rental units handicap accessible. You know, the, the walls have, are built with all the blocking so that you can change everything you need to change to make them handicap accessible. So in terms of affordables, there'll be 36, of which 17 will be one bed, 16 two beds, and three, three beds. In terms of amenities, each building will have an elevator, they'll all have access to the pool, clubhouse, exercise room, and the common rooms. We've got 36 garage spaces available for rent, and we are pricing out and would like to build some storage in the basement of building number three for rent. So just, that's a typical floor plan. The, and I don't have, and I'm not going to present each floor. Buildings one and two are identical. Building three has a higher proportion of two-bedroom units and is, is a little bit That's a view of, from the sky of what the garden buildings will look like. And so that's what I have to say and present about the rental portion of the program. The ownership portion of the program, as I said, is designed to be consumer-driven. The idea is to put up a model and to offer sales from that model on a build-to-suit basis. There's a variety of product types, and we fully expect that we'll be serving a lot of empty nesters, downsizers, we'll also serve families and, and first-time home buyers. The unit mix will be 44 three-beds with 11 affordable and 12 two-beds with three affordables. This is just a, the, the concept here is, there's a village theme, so the, the units are kind of clustered and identified by a village. So again, you can see there's, there's a couple clusters in the, in the, in the first phase, and there's a number of clusters in the, in the second phase. In terms of the unit types, I'm going to kind of go through them quickly. Some of the units will be for sale as affordable or market units, and that is true with both the Pesto and the Foxglove and the Nora Abbey. This unit we, we added, it, it is a, a unit that is available, is either a market or affordable, but we thought it made sense to have a, a market, well, and an affordable unit that work for, for an empty nester who wants a first-floor master. And this, this unit has a first-floor master. So I have a handout that just describes how the pricing is determined for the affordable units. We had a, just didn't come on the screen. So the, the ultimate pricing is, is more or less determined and approved by Mass Housing, and it's formula-driven. So you start with the, the household size, and for a two-bedroom, the household size is deemed to be three people. For a three-bedroom, it's deemed to be four people. So you, you look at the 80% median income for, for the Boston market, for a two-bedroom, for, yeah, for a three-person household, it's $60,650. For a four-bedroom household, it's $67,350. The affordable pricing is determined based on 30% of someone's income going to housing, except they deduct a 10% cushion. And so you come, come up with gross available after the cushion, you have to take out a condo fee, estimated utilities, insurance at $4,000, and, and taxes, and, and then you come up with, she's, you know, what's available for the monthly mortgage payment, and at a 30-year mortgage at a four-and-three-quarter interest rate, and a 10% down payment, you, you end up at 172,000. We used 170 in our, our numbers. For a two-bedroom, in 186, we used 185. Those numbers will change as time progresses, and, and the inputs change. That's a standard symbol. So...
Ownership pricing, but you have...
You can speak up, go ahead.
On here, you have affordable housing pricing. Down under the items is gross rent.
Yeah.
Explain that, please.
Yeah, I stole this chart from, I'm the president of Concord Housing Development Corporation, and a consultant who consults with us put these charts together. You can use them for, for rent or for sale, and I filled in the, the mortgage portion. So it should say gross rent, it should say gross available for mortgage, and that's it, so that's a typo. So I was taking a shortcut.
So just to recap, because not everyone had the handout, after doing the calculations, it looks like an affordable two-bedroom will be approximately $173,000, and an affordable three-bedroom price will be approximately $186,000. Those numbers are subject to change because the state doesn't set the price. It's the state that sets the price, and the applicant has to deliver the up-to-the-minute numbers. That would be the interest rate at the time, the condo fee that's actually found to happen, the taxes at the time. So these numbers are fluctuate a little bit, but that's where he's at now.
And all of these are single-family detached condos?
So in, in, in terms of affordable unit locations, this is the plan that we showed Mass Housing, and they seem to be fine with the plan. The plan is driven by some, to some extent by topography and spacing and, and whatnot. So they are spread around the project as is the requirement, and Mass Housing is satisfied with this one.
Would you have the number of units on lot one, please? Total number of units?
Twenty-four.
Three, four, five, six, so that would be six of 24 in, in phase one.
Okay. And there, yeah. So in terms of, in terms of ownership user options, again, these, these units will be sold, both actually affordable and market, will be on a build-to-suit basis. So people will be able to take the basic plan, and they'll be able to add, potentially add a garage, bay, or bays. They'll be able to add or finish a basement. They may want to add a deck or a three-season room or expand a dormer. Essentially, any addition that won't change the deed-restricted unit bedroom count.
Most of the plans you showed us for the affordable look like they had garages under or, or integral to the plan.
Some of them, some of them will and some of them won't. I think it's about half and half. And it just, there's some, if it is in a, a spot where there's grade so that there needs to be a basement or garage, it has one. If it's on a spot where there's ledge, there's not going to be a garage or a basement. So it, it depends on where it is on the plan. And actually, we have a chart, which I will hand out in a minute to explain that in a little more detail. So, and actually, that is the chart. I put it on the screen because to show... So it goes over to the second page, you might want to rip it apart because I didn't have time to put a header on the second page. This takes a lot of coordination, which I don't have.
Could I, let me skip this for a minute if you don't mind. Basically, what's been passed out and what's on the screen that you can't see from here, because I can't see it from here, is a chart that identifies all 56 units and where they're located and whether there's an ability to put a foundation or not, and then compares by type of home, which home can have a foundation and which can't. And rather than take the time now to go through all of that, because I'd rather see the overview and get bogged down in this later when we start talking about affordability and features and whether they look like each other or not.
That's fine.
So let's go through. Thank you for the chart.
So the chart is designed to... So the chart is designed to relate to an envelope plan. So Ed's suggestion, and this could have come out a little darker.
No, that's good. So we're okay, we can see it on the screen. Thank you.
So the concept here is that although we've punched a ton of holes and done a bunch of drilling to determine where ledge is, it's impossible to lay out one of these projects and know for sure where ledge is going to be. So when you actually start building in the field, you may want to turn some of these units, and you may want to shift them a little bit. So, and if somebody wants a deck, a three-season porch, or they're buying a base unit that didn't have a garage, and they want garage bays, what we've done is we've created a building envelope that is bigger than the actual unit that's shown on the plan. And again, this is going to be a consumer-driven project, so we've taken a wild guess as to how many of which type of unit will actually be sold. But my crystal ball is not that good. And so where we have a laughing tiger, somebody may want, give me another name.
Castor.
Yeah, whatever. And it's going to have different dimensions, and therefore, we've created a development envelope that would accommodate that. You can see that some of them have more flexibility than others. And this chart basically enumerates a unit number, and it describes which of the units could fit within that development envelope, and what options they could have if somebody chose that unit to go in that location. And we, in the, what we passed out, the numbers that are in red are where the affordable units were. And it also, you know, so you can see whether there's a basement, or walkout, or whatever. So, so that really ends my presentation. And I'm happy to answer, or have any of my team answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Bless you. Board members, first, please. Questions?
Bill? One of the slides you have, you're saying that you needed the ZBA approval, and you're going to go to Mass Housing to obtain a site approval letter.
Correct.
Now, under the reg of 40B, wasn't it the other way around, the site approval letter first, and then come to us?
Well, we already have a site approval letter. And the state has approved the site. So this is a formality. And when you switch subsidizing agencies, which happens frequently, this is the protocol that they use. And it's, you know, it's a lot of work for them, and what they said, and they told me this before, is, you know, go get your changes, so that when you come to us, it's an expedited process. You know exactly what your decision is, and it'll be quicker, easier for us to expedite that. I've done it before, that's how we did it.
Questions, boy?
With the market-driven ownership section, how will you deal with the affordables? Will you, will someone be approved in a lottery and then come to you and say, "I want this model"? Or are you going to build them and then put them in a lottery?
No, we'll have a lottery at the beginning of each phase, and, you know, we'll say, you know, here are the locations, and you can have whatever units happen to fit on that location. So if, you know, somebody 65, you know, wants a first-floor master, they can have that if it fits on that location, as opposed to the Foxgloves, which is a colonial style, where the bedrooms are upstairs.
My only concern about that has been historically qualified applicants during the lottery phase frequently can no longer be qualified three or four months later, or when the building is done. So how do you account for that?
Well, typically, in these projects, you have a lottery, and you sell, you know, one or two units, and then all of the rest of the units are sold, really, by sort of a broker. And so I don't think that would be an issue.
Still affordable, but you're saying that the lottery does, the lottery gets undersubscribed?
The lottery will be undersubscribed.
That's what we found, too.
I've got two questions. First of all, for the affordable unit that goes to somebody who buys them, how is it going to be written that they cannot turn around and resell it or rent it?
That's handled, that's kind of.
This will be subject to standard deed rider that's dictated by Mass Housing. And it's, all of the affordable agencies use the same deed rider today.
And just for the benefit of the board, when the lottery price is established, there is a percentage that the state applies, that price is X percent of fair market value at that time and place. So when the unit is resold, the limit on what that affordable person can sell it for is the same percent established by the state of what the then-market price is. So their profit is limited in a state's affordable.
It's deed.
It's a deed restricted.
Because I do know of a couple situations where 40Bs were in an affordable unit and resold three times, and the third time was pre-fulfillment price of the original.
Mr. Rush, let my consultant speak, thank you.
This obviously is an important issue for the state, and all the agencies have agreed upon a universal deed rider. That deed rider is important because it stipulates the terms for any resale. They've actually changed, Sherry, the methodology for determining the resale price, and now it's geared off any increase in the allowable income. What they found with the discount method is that if market prices went up significantly, that discount times the market price might result in a sales price that is not affordable. So now they just take a look at the increase. So buyers can, assuming incomes increase, enjoy a modest, a modest gain on the sale. But this is all recorded. Occasionally, lawyers will, bank lawyers will not do a check, a proper title check, and provide financing for a mortgage, and they're at risk on that.
Follow-up to that, you had on one of your slides that there are options, and they apply to the affordable units as well? So if somebody qualifies, first of all, do the options for adding a full-fitting basement or garage, etc., whatever else, they apply to the affordables?
No, not really, because there are options, and they're available at a price. And that price would increase the price of that unit beyond the affordable range.
All right, so the option will be chosen before the affordable price is set?
No. No.
There's a, it's difficult, if you think about it. The sale price is based upon the maximum allowable sales price. If you then add options to it, it's unlikely that you can recover, able to recover, the cost of those options. If you want to put in a new kitchen, nobody's going to prevent you from putting in a new kitchen, but your sales price is restricted. So if you don't expect to stay there a very long time to amortize those costs, you're really not making a very good investment as an affordable homeowner.
But off of this, isn't one of the goals of the affordable housing is that the units that are affordable should not be different from the non-affordable units, should not stand out in any way as different, and should be part of the community?
In terms of basic design and curb view, they should not be distinguishable from the market-rate units. The interior finishes could be different. If you're doing granite countertops in a market-rate unit, you don't have to do granite countertops. But sort of the guts of the building should be similar. We've had this discussion in the past on some other for-sale projects here in Littleton.
The for-sale, for example, in his first section, all of the units that are affordable are listed to have only crawl spaces, not full basements. Is, you're telling me that's not a problem with the goals of the housing authority?
That's not true.
It is certainly for six, nine, 10, 12, 16, 17.
Right, so for about half of the units is true, and then some of them will have garage under, and some of them will have walkout condition, some of them will have basements. And again, it's.
I was talking about your first phase here, what you called A.
Yeah, so there's more ledge there.
Because this is what you'd like to do, and I looked at the old Littleton Village on the Common Comprehensive Permit, and there were some units, not all units, had basements on that. I think with the board ultimate, the agreement, or the decision the board reached, is that the percentage of units with basements will be similar for the market-rate units and the affordable units. And it was paraded that way. But I think probably what needs to be done, this is the first time the boards receive this information, I think you're going to have to take a look at this, take a look at the site plan, take a look at the models, because there are significant differences among these models. And sort of after you've had a chance to take a look at that, you know that's an interest of mine, I'll be taking a look at it. And I think then you make a decision. But I would argue it's your decision, it's not Mass Housing's decision.
I would argue the opposite.
Thank you.
All right, now, other questions?
Yes.
Can I go on? You have a order of, what order are you planning to build these phases in? Do you have a particular order in mind? Are you going to build all of them at once? You're going to do ABC, CBA?
We'll probably do two phases, and we're debating whether it's the front section or the rear section that goes first. And I'm not, I'm not 100% sure which one will go first. There's advantages logistically to both.
Okay. And it looks like you, from one of your slides, it looks like you show access onto Nagoff Park, you wanted to put a sign down there?
There's a walking path.
A wa, oh, the sign's for the walking path.
The sign is because there's 380 apartment dwellers that drive by every day, and when we have a unit available, I'd like them to know.
Okay.
So it's a commercial.
I understand that.
And there's also, you know, thousands of people that work in the park.
Patrick?
How many garages are you eliminating for this whole project? Garages.
Patrick, when you say eliminating, eliminating from the prior plan?
Yes.
Or do you mean, out of all these homes, how many will not have garages?
That's right.
Okay. I think you mean this current version, how many homes will not have any garages?
Well, in the apartments, we'll have, there's 144 apartments, and we'll have 36 garage spaces that are available to rent. And that's kind of an industry standard. If you have more than that, you find you have vacancy amongst your garage bays. In terms of the ownership portion, Mark, do you have?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. I mean, the garages are optional. It would be very difficult to predict, because we're going to build to suit. That's the market plan. So if somebody came in, as an example, and everybody picked a Pesto, there is no garage.
But most of your plans appear that the garages are integral to the home.
There are some.
With bedrooms over, most of them look that way. So in reality, I think your answer is none of the affordables have garages planned, unless the odd chance somebody picked that one Nora Abbey there that has a garage under. But that garage under doesn't work in the first phase, because he said he's on ledge.
Yeah, so.
There'll be no garages on the affordables in the first phase, according to what he's showing us.
What the plan has, doesn't it only crawl spaces in any?
But, but, okay, so.
Sheen down between bedrooms.
So this little building, carriage house. Carriage house?
Right inside.
Right inside.
That is a garage, and the affordable units in that first bay will get a space in that garage.
How many bays are in that garage?
Six.
So what you're saying is six affordable units will have a bay in that garage?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that these units here will each get a unit in this garage.
You're saying nine and 10. Is that correct? The ones that are in that little pod?
Yes.
That's nine and 10. So two affordable units in that pod will get a garage.
Will get a garage. If there's only two affordable units in that pod.
And there's four units in Phase One that won't get a garage. Four affordable units in Phase One won't get a garage.
Correct. And in the rear, what would be the affordable location plan?
16, 17.
So since this seems to work better, I don't know. My recollection is that this unit has garage.
Well, it says on your plan here that 42, 43, 44, and 46 don't have garages. That's four out of six. Four out of seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, four of the, don't have garages.
But a couple of them will have full basements with lockout basements.
Right.
As you, around the corner, go up the hill.
So, you know, since this will be built on a build-to-suit basis, including the affordable units, until the end of the project, you know, people should have some choice as to about, in terms of which of those features are.
No, because the affordable folks don't have that choice, because they, you price out very quickly if we don't include them in the base.
No, what I'm.
You already made that statement earlier.
What I'm saying is that, you know, if a garage is really important, and there's a location there where that location is going to have a unit on it with a garage, then they can choose that. If a basement is more important to them, and there's a location available where that unit is going to have a basement, then they can choose that. And so they will have some choice, near the end of the process, but those choices will be somewhat limited.
Does that answer your question, Patrick? Can I just ask you about, I still don't understand, does every single home have a driveway, so that the, with or without a garage, if I live there, I can get off the street and into my yard? It looks like it.
Actually, in this cluster here.
Morning Glory?
Morning Glory Cluster. Those units have a carriage house for garage, and there are parking spaces here and here. And those units all face a courtyard, no, and they don't have driveways behind the units. So this is a modern concept that is very popular across the country. It's a little village, one was just built in Concord. The developer's a friend of mine, and I thought he was completely out of his mind, and he sold all the units in the worst housing market that we've seen in decades. And people are really happy. And people are really happy living there. So I guess what I would ask you is to suspend your personal taste, because this isn't about your personal taste. And this is a market-driven project, and it's a build-to-suit project, and, you know, if we're wrong about market taste, you know, we'll, we'll pay the price. But that's, that's our design.
Of the eight units that don't seem to have driveways, four of them are affordable. And out of, and that's a high percentage of this total of A. I think, I think when we get there, we need to address the location of the affordables, is what I'm saying. And I think we, as Mr. Marchand said, we need to review a lot of this.
Okay, so let's move on to other questions, not having to do with the style of units, because there's plenty of meat here to talk about.
There certainly is.
We, we have before us a presentation for a substantial change to the existing comprehensive permit. Does any, can I, a board member's satisfied to open it up, I'll come back to you, give more questions. But now we'd like to open it up to department heads and chairs, the impatient.
Can you start with Mr. Marchand?
Start. He doesn't, he's-
I don't have any.
Any department heads and chairs want to speak to this? Board, board members?
No.
Okay, how about anybody else in the audience? In the rear, I can't see you from, I know you, but I can't see you.
Robin Bigelow, leg away. The large complex rental units, 54 feet high, 53 feet high, how many stories is that?
Four. Anyone else?
Following up on the 53-foot height, four stories. Ceiling heights are eight feet. I mean, with the plan, there were no sections. So can you tell us why, how it comes out to 53 feet? Just to play that.
Yeah, each, I think the ceilings are 83, which is, which is a little lower than standard. And so our architect designed it so that with the pitch of the roof, you get to 53 feet. So the pitch of the roof is a little bit lower than it normally would be.
Okay, I'll take a minute to read into the record the comments that came. It's curious to me that we did not receive any formal comments from any boards or departments about this request for substantial change or the plans. The plans have been submitted around to all the boards and departments. And we had a short presentation approximately a week ago where I think almost everyone was represented, and everyone was asked to submit in writing any comments. So I was curious that none came in.
Three days ago.
Right now?
That was three days ago.
That's it?
Yeah. One day, yeah.
Funny how time flies when you haven't thought.
So I'm certain that we will have to go another meeting anyway, and people could still, the boards could still have a chance to make their comments. But generally, the impression to this change was favorable. There's a few things I'll speak to in a minute. This is a letter from Inabutter. I'm sorry, not Inabutter. Her name is Megan Rank, and she's from Six Green Needles Road. It's a resident. Dear Mr. Bergman, Board of Selectmen, and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I am unable to make tonight's meeting regarding proposed changes with the 40B on Great Road. I am discouraged to learn that the developer wants to lose the clause keeping the units' rentals in perpetuity. It is now even more clear that the developer has no desire to actually provide affordable housing in the town of Littleton. This is an outright attempt to use the rules of 40B to circumvent our zoning for the present while maximizing profit and diminishing the actual affordable housing for the future. Say no. Avalon Acton has high vacancies. We have other failed 40B projects in town. This developer is getting nervous. Please say no. Let us work towards creating a better plan for affordable housing, perhaps requiring all new developments to include affordable housing. People would then have a real chance at real home in a neighborhood. Thank you for your time. We also received a letter from Town Council which simply explains the timetables for keeping the SHI count. And Tom, I'd hate you to speak to that rather than reading the letter out loud. Why don't you just tell the board so we're all familiar with timetables?
Okay, so, so just, so that you're all aware, as you know, a major goal that was achieved with this project was getting Littleton over its 10% subsidized housing inventory number. So just to keep in mind, not to dictate how you run your show, but to keep in mind, the permit became effective last year on February 21st. So that was kind of the first day that we were over our 10%. The permit number is good for a year. So if we don't issue a building permit on a significant number of the units before February 21st, we're going to fall back off, or we're going to fall below our 10% number. So just kind of working backwards, there's a 20-day appeal period that we need to figure in. So in, in this case, you would want to make your decision, if you're concerned about that number, on or before January 31st. Then we have the 20-day appeal period. And if the building permit is issued, applied for, and issued in a timely basis before February 21st, we'll stay above our 10% number.
Even if we issue the per, the changes by the 31st, there's no guarantee that the building permit will be pulled by the 21st, is there?
There's no guarantee, no. Hopefully, we're all working in-
So we have, we have no way to control this, really?
We don't.
Okay, thank you.
We just hope that we're all working in good faith towards a comment.
Well, we thought the building permit would've been pulled by now, too, when we issued the permit.
Now, I also want to speak to the overall picture here. There is a significant change to the rental in perpetuity clause, as the resident commented. There is, however, some benefit in losing some three bedrooms, and some benefit, I think tremendous benefit, in getting three elevator buildings for a different population, and what I think is a great need in this community. So those are the things we're weighing here. As I see it, the developer has made a very good effort to keep our SHI where we wanted it to be under the host community agreement through 2030. I just did a quick math on this, though, and we projected, Keith, we projected the 2020 census numbers based on historic building, and this project alone could add 124 units if it's built out by the 2020 census.
We had factored that as well, yes.
But what about, there are some large developments coming online.
I think he's factored that in. That's all I wanted to check.
Yeah, and, and those numbers were, were codified in the post-community agreement that the selectmen entered into. Basically, it was backing up, it's where we came up with the, with the figure of at least 100 units from this development. Need to be countable on the subsidized housing inventory. It doesn't mean that the town, it doesn't relieve the town of any obligation to continue to pursue affordable housing goals. It gives us some breathing room if we can stay above 10%. But it only, you know, it certainly obligates the town to continue to work on affordable housing, but knowing that at least the share that's, that comes from this development will be there for us to, to count on to keep us above 10%. There could be other units, for example, not this one. There might be other units on the inventory that fall off for one reason or another. We need to be proactive in making sure that those other units and new units come on board. That's, that's why we're, we're preparing to update our housing production plan so that we have a, a strategy as a community to, to address affordable housing needs.
And assuming that the concept, I like to call it a PUD. In other areas of the country, they call these, they look like planned unit developments. They're clusters sitting together, and it's a different kind of living style than we're used to in Littleton. Assuming that it, it gains favor, it takes off here, this will not stop us, even though we're above the SHI, this will not stop us from entertaining another development that might be a smaller, more benign, but also a smart sense of development for a smaller lot, let's say, right?
We could certainly do that under so-called friendly 40Bs. But what it, what it does do, if we stay above 10%, it puts the community in the driver's seat in saying, where would we like to see those, those units? And that's, you know, that's what we're working on.
So again, I'm, I'm really surprised that there's not more voices being heard. I don't want to monopolize, but I want to, please, I don't want to hear another voice.
I have a question, I guess it's for Town Council. How many building permits have to be issued before the deadline date, before we drop off the 10%?
Yeah, I believe it's 54.
54.
So then I originally threw out the question, because you brought this up, that, you know, we have to move along, expeditious men are not going to keep our 10%. But the fact of the matter is, keeping the 10% past February is not realistic. That's too many building permits, that's not going to happen.
Just let the applicant answer, he comes up first.
Certification of the building permits. Not 54 building permits, but building permits for 54 units.
For 54 building units, yes.
They do a building permit for one private building, that's multiplying units.
That's 48 units right there.
Right.
So Buildings 1 and Buildings 2 are identical. So to the extent that we can get it in gear, I think we have a relatively good chance of pulling building permits for those two buildings, which would be 96 units, which solves your issue.
By the February date?
By the February date. And, you know, I'm, I don't personally care about the February date, but-
We sure do.
But, you know, we're willing to put our, pour in the water. But you have to understand that, that the construction drawings for those two identical buildings, it's a six-figure plus expense. I'm not going to, you know, sign the order to do that until this board says, go ahead.
And, for clarification, and I understand-
And they don't happen overnight. And it'll cost more money, because I'm going to have to have my architects and engineers work overtime, work through holiday time, et cetera. So it's a relatively expensive proposition.
And I don't think we should be in a position where, quite frankly, we are being forced to accept changes. I mean, this is a very, the rental units and the rental buildings, four-story rental buildings are a very significant change from what we approved. It's a huge change, and it's not at all what we worked towards for over a year. And to suddenly be having a gun to our head and looking at that deadline as a gun to our head to approve three, four-story buildings with 48 units into them doesn't make sense. It, it just, I mean, that's, it's not reasonable.
I agree. Do you mind if I just respond to that?
Please.
So I'm, I'm not putting a gun to your head. February 21st, you know, I don't really care. But what I will tell you is that, is that my partner's pockets are lighter because I used poor judgment in, in negotiating an approved plan that wasn't feasible. And, and these changes make the project economically feasible. So, so what I'm saying is, and I think you should take comfort in the fact, that the criteria by which you can say, I don't want this, is health, safety, environment. You know, this is an economically feasible project. That wasn't. I spent, and my company and my partner spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans-
Mr. Hale, you wasted almost over a year.
Cheryl, let him finish, please.
And, and we, we tried in good faith, I believed in that plan. I told myself that plan was going to work. It didn't. I've been told by a lot of institutional investors and bankers that the plan just didn't work, and that what they want to invest in, and what's economically feasible for a rental project, is exactly what I just proposed. And so that's what's economically feasible. That's it. That's what works. It works for the-
Now, let her respond.
Okay.
You wasted over a year of our time. It is your job and your business to know what is economically feasible. For you to now stand here and tell, and have us try to feel bad for you because you wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars-
Don't feel bad for me, I'm just saying.
No, don't interrupt me, Hale, don't interrupt. You, you complained of wasting hundreds of thousands of dollars and taking money out of your partner's pockets. You wasted hundreds of hours of our time. We're volunteers, and our time is valuable to us, too.
I appreciate that.
Well, it doesn't sound like you do. And whether you're putting the gun to our heads or not, there's a gun to our heads now. And that's not acceptable, in my opinion. And I'm not going to look at it as a gun to our heads. The fact that we are, I'm not going to be bulldozed into approving four-story, 48-unit buildings, which are not in, as safe or as good character or as appealing as what we did approve and what we worked so hard to get to. So we're going to have to look at some of this, and it's, it's not-
That's, that's, that's your, that's your prerogative. And I think, you know, I feel bad about the time that was spent by, by all of us. But I, I, I will tell you that I recently went, and I frequently go to symposiums, and Steve Samuels, who is doing literally a billion dollars of development in Boston and lots of different places, made the comment that in the last 10 years, every single major project he's done, by the time he actually spent the two to three years to get it approved, the market had changed. And in every single case, he had to go back and make changes and get it re-approved. In every single case. I'm no different.
This is hugely significant change to the rental part. You know, the, the townhouses and the owner part that you're talking about-
Stop, stop, stop a minute, please. We are here because the board voted this is a substantial change.
Right.
We, he's here because the board voted it's a substantial change. There's no gun to anybody's head. I asked Town Council to express to the board what the timetables are, not telling us that we have any obligation to meet those timetables. Mr. Hale has no real incentive to pull permits by February 21 because he has his approvals good for three years. He really can wait and not pull permits for three solid years. So he's not putting any gun to this board's head. We, as a community, need to make a determination if we are going to try to all work in good faith to try to hold the SHI count or not. And it's as simple as that. Nobody feels that we have to force a decision that is unliked by the majority, or the board, or the process. We don't have to force a decision to, to hold our SHI. We have to decide as a community whether to do that or not. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Simone, Charles Ridge, just two quick questions. Through the chair for Town Council, are there any other mechanisms by which the February 21st timing imperative, other than the 20-day period, can be extended to provide some breathing room for this process? Or have we exhausted those and we already discussed them?
That's a very good question, Council.
Not that I have a.
I would say hypothetically, no.
No.
And there was discussion, Mr. D. Simone, for you and for others, we have had discussion with the applicant, with his council, with our council, with Ed Marchand, about whether maybe pulling a foundation permit would suffice, maybe whether there's a extension period, we could count a date different than the February 21st date. And I think Keith went to a symposium on it where he testified to look for bear.
Well, you know, in fact, the, the answer to the question, isn't there any other way to do it? Well, we, if we could get the legislature to change state law, then we would have more than 12 months from the date that you issue your decision to the date that the units fall off, the building permit isn't pulled by the developer. Town meeting petitioned the legislature in November to change, to so change the law, following the lead of some other communities that have done the same thing. The legislature has not passed any of those bills, and-
You think they will by February?
It's unlikely. Well, you know, the House, the House of Representatives just passed a two-year budget deal, so I suppose- suppose anything's possible, but...
Thank you.
I doubt it.
And Mr. De Simone, you had a second question?
Sure. Has the applicant visited with the school committee, or do they plan to review what, if any, impact this has on the schools? While they're under no obligation, given that that's not a criteria with respect to this approval, it would be good information for us to have.
Mr. Hale.
Yeah, so we did meet with the school department at the beginning of the process. We have not, since we changed the design, and my sense is with more three bedrooms, more one bedrooms and fewer three bedrooms, that, you know, the impact is likely to be diminished. But it's beyond my control in any event. I mean, I'm in this position, in the town of Concord, our, the town's nonprofit group is, has been given a piece of land, 12 acres off Winthrop Street. And, you know, it's deed restricted, it has to be used for affordable housing. And, you know, it's a nonprofit volunteer thing, and people still, you know, bring up the school issue and don't want to educate kids from affordable units. And I think it's unfortunate. Doesn't matter if you're in a for-profit position or a nonprofit, you get the same type of stuff.
Mr. Hale, I don't think that was the question. I think the question is...
Thank you.
That was insulting.
Thank you very much.
That was a little insulting.
If he was answering a question somebody else must have asked him.
I think the question, I think the question is fairly, is it likely to increase the number of children in the school if units are for sale rather than for rent? And it's as simple as that, regardless of the affordability component. But thank you for your answer. Yes, actually, can I hold you one second? Mr. McCurdy's hand was up first, and then yours was next. Pardon me.
I think in asking my question, the point is that there's a lot to do here. And I'm not in your position, I'm glad I'm not in your position. But, you know, it's all well and good, he has to come forward because of the economic condition, but we, as, you know, the people who are serving this town, have to do what best for this town. And I don't think, and this is my opinion, I don't think it's realistic to think we're going to get through this process before we fall off the 10% chart. And I don't think we should rush to do that. And only out of being realistic about what time we have, what we have to go through for holidays, and all the other things. We don't even have input from boards and committees yet to look at. Many of these boards haven't had a chance to meet yet. And we just have to face the fact that we may well fall off the 10%.
Possibly. And also, it may be that we'll fall off the 10%, and there's no one in the pipeline who can come in fast enough to slip another project in, too, before we get back on the 10%.
I agree.
So, you're right. No, I promised this woman, and now I'll come back to you.
First, what has, like, 86, Chris Mill, that essentially is my question. What happens February 22nd? I mean, is somebody ready to hand in plans?
We know if no one ready to hand in plans. And as a practical matter, they have to get a site approval letter. We have no indication that there's anybody seeking that. They frequently try to come before the Board of Selectmen first. We have no indication that anyone's there doing that. And then, we have to review the application informally. So, you're right, we would have a good 30-day lead time before the next application can really come on formally. So that's a good question, too. Mr. Bill.
But our window of vulnerability would be two years, essentially. Is that correct?
No.
If they have a three-year permit, if they have a three-year permit, and if in February, we're now vulnerable, because the housing units drop off, because they haven't pulled a permit, and they've got two years, so they're in play for two years, but we're vulnerable for two years to another 200 unit.
No, we're vulnerable till they pull the permits.
When they could wait up to two years to pull the permits.
Yeah, or longer, if they ultimately decide they can't go forward and no one else has come forward, then we're permanently below 10%.
Mr. Marchand.
Let me try to explain. The critical date is 12 months. If building permits are not pulled within 12 months of the time the comprehensive permit was final, the units drop until such time that they pull a permit. The next date that you have to be concerned about is if more than 18 months expire between the issuance of the building permit and the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, you lose the permit. So one of the boards, one of the questions the board wants to ask the applicant is, how soon do you expect to be able to complete the building and pull that certificate of occupancy?
So you mean, even if we were to rush and manage to get Mr. Hale to agree, to pull, say, two building permits for Buildings 1 and 2? If he didn't have an occupancy permit within six months of that?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months of that.
Right. Which is certainly enough time to build two of those apartment buildings. I just want to reiterate what the chair said. For 40Bs, you have to get a project eligibility letter. In order to get a project eligibility letter, the subsidizing agency gives a town 30 days to submit comments. So you will always be aware that another project is in the works. It's also very common, if you ask for a two-week extension, that you could get a two-week extension to that. So it gives you a 45-day period to make some moves.
In your experience, have there been other towns in this position, and has someone slipped in and tried to use, you know, to get in front in line?
No, I've had experience where towns have been very deliberate, for example, recently in Norwood, to get a housing production plan approved prior to the issuance of a comprehensive permit, by one day, issue the comprehensive permit in advance of another development that they knew was in the works, that had been in open discussions with the town.
Where they were below 10%.
And they were below 10%. So what they got, they wanted to get that two-year moratorium. What you have to remember is, you're in a good position, because this is going to get you to 10%. Once you're at 10%, as stated previously, you can deny any project because you've met local needs. You can also approve any project, but you have leverage.
Mr. Birdman, does, I know that you are working on a housing development plan for the town of Littleton.
Yes.
How close are we to getting that approved? Getting that...
A year away. Well, I met with the state housing officials, there's no expedited procedure for updating our plan. We're contracting with Metropolitan Area Planning Council to update our Housing Production Plan, it's called, and that it's, it'll be a nine-hour process for its completion, so...
And then the town has to vote on it?
September. But Ed's point was, in the comparison with the other community, if the community were below 10%, then having the Housing Production Plan in place would allow you to count the units in the, having that plan in place first would then allow you to count your newly-created units from an applicant, because the Housing Production Plan only lets you count new units that you've never approved before.
Can I try to explain that?
Yeah.
There's no urgency right now for the town to have an approved Housing Production Plan in terms of protecting yourself in regard to future 40Bs. It's critical for the town I was working in, Norwood, to have an approved Housing Production Plan, because the project it approved created more than 1% of the housing units necessary. Therefore, if you do that, and you have an approved Housing Production Plan, you get a two-year grace period during which you can deny any comprehensive permit, and the applicant would not have the right to appeal. Here, you're going to get, you're going to get to 10% if this project modification is approved.
So let's back down.
And the building permits are pulled, and the number of units are built and occupied within 18 months.
Right, within 18 months.
Let's say that that doesn't happen. We, this could take, there's significant changes here, this could take a while to get approved. Odds are, we're going to fall off the, as Mr. McCurdy said, we're going to fall off the February 21st deadline. Suddenly, we are below the 10%.
But you can get right up again when you issue the building permit. And you'll be good for 18 months.
But he could take two years to pull his building permits.
He could.
That's what I'm looking for, is what's the window of vulnerability?
So for two years, we're open to another 40B coming in, unless we have a town plan?
No. Remember now, if I'm a developer, if I'm a developer, and I know you're that close, whenever I work with developers, I say, look, first thing we're going to do is check to see where town stands on its 40B subsidized housing inventory count. And in fact, I'm doing this right now in Danvers. And I realized that we're at the 10%, so I called on behalf of my client and said, look, you've met the 10%. Are you interested in at least listening to a potential new 40B project? And they said, yes, come in. But any smart developer will do that. They're not going to invest all the time and money when they know the town is that close, or could be right at 10%. Because you can't do anything with a 10%.
Okay, I'd like to move along for a minute and maybe summarize this way. We've been sitting at this for an hour and a half. Can you just let me summarize, and then I'll let you speak? We have in front of us a request for modification, which involves a substantial change. We've heard some comments about what some of the concerns are with that change. We have also heard about the timetables, and we have heard whether or not the timetables can be met, should be met, or we should try to force ourselves to meet them. And it's clear, that's not what you want to do. What I think what we need to do next is establish some sort of a list, or some sort of a way to collect and gather those elements of this change that are worthy of further discussion. And I think I'm going to poll the board to do that, to see where you're at on that. And then, as we go through this, there was a draft decision circulated for this new proposal. The draft decision will highlight where it changes substantially from the initial decision. We had a draft decision committee formed for the prior approval, and I don't think it would hurt to have a subcommittee formed to start meeting on the draft decision, so that we can bring back to the board the highlighted areas of where the changes are being proposed, and where it's going to impact what we already approved.
Could we possibly have a working session of the full board, public's work, but where nothing is being presented, where we can all sit down and talk freely with each other and look at what we think about? I mean, I have a problem with the four-story buildings, but I may be the only one that has a problem with the four-story buildings.
I have a problem with the four-story buildings.
Well, I'm suggesting that we take another hour tonight to go through that initially, and then continue the meeting to a time when we can do just what you're saying.
Just a working meeting, I don't care if the public's here.
Well, they have to be here, it's going to be posted.
We're talking.
Yeah. It would be a continuation hearing, and it will be posted, and the public is invited, and the public comment will be invited. But yes, a working session. But what I'd like to do, again, because it's really relatively quiet on so many issues, but I'm hearing some real passion on some of the issues, let's air them right now.
Is there a draft decision for this?
The draft decision was presented by Attorney Levine. I don't know if it's modified since then, or if you have a modification.
Oh, we did, Mr. Ponz, it's nothing, my office, on behalf of the applicant, took the previous decision, and we identified those changes, and some placeholders, many placeholders, that needed to be changed. It just was a working discussion document, for the exact reason that Sherry indicated. So it could point out, this needs to be changed, there may be other things that need to be changed, so you can see the scope of the changes.
So who got this? I am seeing it.
It didn't come through the board yet? So it was just, Mr. Levine and the applicant had started assembling it. What I think should happen is that that ought to be circulated to the board, or submitted to the board. I think, as I said, we should reform the working subcommittee to make sure that when they present the changes, the working subcommittee has had a chance to go through it with the original decision and see where that is, so that we have some back and forth on that. And that should happen sooner rather than later, there's no reason to hold that off. And then, we should have a continuation of this hearing for the full board, to continue to talk about the areas of these changes that we want to focus on. Stress, focus on. And so I think tonight, the presentation was made, and I'd love to poll going around one at a time around the room, and just see your initial reactions. These aren't set in stone, and they're not the only reactions, but let's hear. Alan, would you mind if I started with you?
Yeah, first thing is that I can't be this short. Sorry, I can't figure out what it means. I think at some future point, I'd like the applicant to go through maybe the first 10 units, and explain across what the X's mean. I mean, for instance, under foundation, it looks like Crawlins and other X's, and then there's, I just can't really understand it. So maybe go through the first 10, I could then understand what the system with a chart really means. But I don't want that to happen now. Secondly, my concern is that, I just want to make sure mapping, connecting this chart with the map of the site, to make sure that I understand where Unit 1 actually is, and Unit 2, and so forth. Just concerned that Units 6, 9, 10, and 12, and 16, and 17 not get clustered together, to have some assurance about that. I also have a concern about the extra four feet. I'd like to know more about why that is required.
What, what, extra four feet?
The variance.
Increasing the variance we gave.
Height variance.
That's on top of the variance that we gave.
Yeah. And I think for now, those are my priorities.
Can I just ask you, the conversion from for rent to for sale, is I right with you?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff?
I have some questions about the chart also. There is at least one that doesn't have any X under it. And then there's five of these plans that I don't have a copy of, especially the dessert ones, the cupcakes, the shortcake, and the scotty. Yeah. But anyway, so I'd like a, you know, a completely, I think the big question for me is, you know, the distribution of the affordables. Actually, I think it'd be a great option for someone to get one of these affordables in this present form that you're showing. But I want to make sure they're not stigmatized, and I'm not sure we're there yet. I have no problem with the height variance. I'd like to, you know, I would like some kind of, we had, we had taken specific buildings in the previous plan and allowed a greater height, and these buildings were at much higher elevation than these flats were. So in general, my feeling is, we've lowered the overall height of the project significantly. If you could show the board that in some way, you know, if you just took, you know, an elevation and put on, you know, on each of these buildings, and then took the previous plan, put, you know, where we gave you variances before, I think they would see that those roofs were probably 10 to 20 feet higher than these roofs are going to be.
We can easily do that. I'd also like to make the point to the board, that the three or four feet buys you an elevator. Without the four feet, you don't have four floors. I can't amortize the cost of an elevator in those buildings over three floors. And therefore, I can't serve the aging population that needs to be served. It's one or the other, and that's just the economic reality. I don't make up the rules.
We'll get into that back and forth. I just want to lay out the concerns.
And the other comment on the building, of the rental buildings, I would anticipate that the upper floors are going to have really fantastic views across Nagog, and, you know, and it's a little, you know, I understand how this works, you know, these are sort of generic buildings. And it's a little disappointing to me that the site plan and the building plans don't really take that into account. So that's neither here nor there, but it's sort of an amenity that is sort of ignored in this plan. But otherwise, you know, I think my main concern is the... But otherwise, you know, I think my main concern is the treatment of the affordables in the housing component.
In the for-sale component? And you're okay with these converting some to for-sales?
If, you know, I know these numbers are assumptions, but under these numbers, yes, I am okay.
John, if you'll forgive me, Mr. Dennis was here earlier and I really want to hear from you and I think you might have left to go to planning board.
Yes, please.
So can I ask you to speak before you?
Oh, sure. We sat down with David yesterday afternoon and this plan is very sensible from our perspective. Obviously, the details, we've dealt with the details and we reserve the right, we'd like to reserve the right to work with the engineering firm once the plan is finalized for a proper layover utilities. As we said, to us, it's tight spots and with the bedrock, it becomes even tighter in terms of trying to fill the utilities in. And since a sewer system is not individuals, it's a community system, we'd like to work with developer towards trying to maximize the proper ten-foot offsets to minimize the cost. And similarly, we're going to use this unit and we have the initial plans and work with fire department. We're going to sit down with our modelers and use this as a test case for modeling the whole site, make sure that the fire flows through all the units meet the minimum criteria so that the builder can build at the most affordable cost. Because again, if you go below a hundred gallons of minimum flow, the cost, because of proximity of the buildings, the individual condos, individual homes, the proximity of the buildings raise the cost because of firewalls and all those things. So we're going to work with the developers consulting team and model the whole subdivision when it's finalized to try to make sure that we meet the eight hundred gallon minimum flow at every location so that it doesn't become contradictory during construction. So we're going to work over the next few months, once this quarter approves the plans, to lay things out in an appropriate fashion.
And what I heard was some change will happen to the user fees because originally it was going to be one user and they were going to collect all the water bills and then pay you, but now it'll be different users. And you'll work that out, but do we have to hear from you about application fees or any requests for hookup fee waivers for affordable units?
For the affordable units, that would be something that we should have only the affordable units a decision on that. You should, I'll go to my board on that because we have done both ways. So once the determination is made of what is affordable, how many are affordable, then let us chime in on waiving of connection fees.
Thank you.
Okay, just on the affordables. The units, the nice thing is it's all cleaner now because the rentals are in buildings that are meant to be rentals. And so those who have one connection fee and then go to the management company, the individual detached condos, we'll call them for lack of a better term, will have individual connection fees just like any other neighborhood, even though it's a private subdivision, those are the impact fees. And then we'll take advisement, waiving the cost of connection fees, impact fees for the affordable units once the determination is made on how many they are, where they are.
Thank you.
That's unreasonable?
Yes, thank you.
Sheri, one more comment?
Yeah, Jeff, one more. And then if you don't mind, I'm going to skip to Ms. Hollinger because she has a kid pick up, so.
Oh, sure. I also wanted to, notwithstanding the content of what you showed us, your presentation this time was much, much more, it was, you know, these type of things are fantastic. One of the reasons why we may not have gotten as much comment is because these visuals just completely answer questions that are, you know, that hang over people's heads. I'd also like to say that when you look at, if you had this presentation in the previous plan with the townhouse plan, these streetscapes are infinitely much better than those would have been because those were actually quite tall buildings. Some of them were, you know, over thirty feet high. They were slab fronted, they were long. And while it's an interesting housing type from the streetscape point of view, this is much better.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Well, I can't revert before we dissolve the meeting because then I lose, I can't, I would lose time here and then that counts against me as part of the meeting.
No, you can catch him, watch the tape.
But then it counts as one of the times. And so I can't, so I'm going to make, yeah, it would count as one of the times. I think we're at the point where we need to go to a working meeting. I request that we dissolve the meeting within the next five, 10 minutes and come back to a working meeting and as soon as we can post one.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, I can't do that. I said I was going to give it another hour to poll the entire board and I have to do that. We're generally used to going until 10 or 11 on longer meetings, so I have to do that. Why don't you give your input so I have your input?
Well, could we take a break so I can try to make some calls and get someone to pick her up? That's a reasonable request.
Take a break, take a five-minute break.
Thank you. Does anyone need to go to the bathroom or drink?
Okay, we're calling it back to order.
He may get files, he may get, you know, 3D files for these plans that he's able to...
Ms. Hollinger has found alternative arrangements, so John, I'll stay in order now. You're next about your comments.
Thank you though. Thank you for my break. Thank you for your patience.
After looking at everything here and everything, I like this plan better than the original plan. I'm glad the developer had the foresight to realize that the original development wanted work because we don't want to be into another 40B that's going to go under. So I applaud them for putting the effort in and this is a good thing, I think, in the long run because we're going to have a project that will more than likely succeed and be an asset to the town. I like the individual buildings compared to condos. The four-story, as you know, I'm not a fan of, but I could be persuaded because of the elevator situation. I'm in favor and the butters seem not to be opposed to it from what I've heard so far. So I don't have a problem on pretty much any of it.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you. Couple things. We have two sets of specifications and one is for the village apartments by the architect David White and the other is called Wildflower Meadow. Wildflower Meadow, the single-family houses or, I mean, that's not clear in here. And there were some things that are a little bit different in each of these and whatever else, so it's something to take a look at. Also too, we have not even touched on tonight and I think we need to, will have to. We do have this thing about change to waivers and, you know, and change is bolded a couple times and I'm not sure exactly what that means, but at some point, yes, like we did with the previous project, you need to go through the whole waiver list almost item by item and take a look at it as we go along. Also too, compare it to what waivers we gave before, what waivers we don't need, what waivers we still need with this list. And others, some kind of synchronize the two of them together. I think that would be good.
That's in the draft that we tried to do where we had the waiver list deleted and added to. And actually, it shrinks, I think.
And maybe what the subcommittee can look at.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We've attempted to do that for it.
But there was no mention up to this point tonight about...
No, I agree.
...everything else, so I wanted to throw that out, make sure we still get the cover of everything else. You know, I don't put my own judgment on a project whether I like it or not, whatever else. After all we did before and everything else, it comes out as not feasible. I welcome a change if this is more feasible because again, we don't want a project that gets started and then goes to funk and it looks like a bomb hit it and everything else. So, you know, if this is going to be something that has a much better chance of being completed and coming out to look like, you know, what's been presented, the pictures, then I'm all for it. With that and everything else that, you know, from this board and from the applicants, from the butters, whoever, if there are comments like, "I don't want this, I don't like this," and everything else, I think we ought to address all these issues as to why. You know, if it's not, you know, feasible, if it's not safe, if it's, you know, whatever else. And, you know, the fire department's going to have to weigh in on the four stories on the 53 feet high because I think they're one of the prime players in that decision. You know, the building codes are rest and everything else based on fire prevention and fire protection, closeness of buildings and everything else. So I'd be very interested in seeing a lot of comments from the fire department. Also too, with Mr. Bernier and the fire department working with Mr. Hale, the architect and everybody else, even now with preliminary specs, preliminary designs, whatever else, let's make sure that there aren't going to be hangups later on so that when and if we get to the point of approving this project, then it's not going to be a two-year gap and they have to get a building permit application and all of a sudden, you know, somebody realizes there is something missing or something that hasn't been looked at. So I think even now, that would be a good time to start some, to keep, if there have been some discussion, keep them going. If there hasn't, there should be, you know, to help keep that going on the same track as what we are.
Good comments. Cheryl?
I think that the butters probably, I think that the fact that the part A and part B have gone to single-family detached condos can only improve the butters' situation and resale and the impact on their properties. And I have absolutely no problem with those going to ownership. Ownership condominium complexes tend to be much better kept, tend to be much better run and tend to maintain values more and thus will be beneficial, I feel I'm trying to give you my reasons, beneficial to the butters. The rental part, I do have, but I do have concerns about placement and amenities of the affordable units in that part. And I think we need to address that. On the part C, the rental part, we went through a lot of changes and negotiation that a lot of this started with these four-story buildings. I guess, can I interrupt myself with a quick question, Mr. Marchant? You do a lot of 40Bs both from both angles. Is it true that you can't economically feasibly have an elevator for less than a four-story building? Do you see elevators in buildings that are only three stories?
Nothing absolutely. I've seen elevators in three-story buildings, but four-story buildings are more economical. Not only for the elevator, but for other reasons.
I think the applicant also stated that the building costs necessary to amortize the cost of an elevator with today's code compliance.
I'm questioning, I guess I'm questioning his statement if that is a true, that is just not economically feasible. I mean, that's like saying it's not economically feasible to build a septic sewage system for less than 200 units.
You have to look at everything. So you can't say it's not feasible. There are three-story buildings that are built with elevators. But in general, when you take a look at the common cost, the roof, the foundation, you get to amortize it over one additional floor. And that begins to affect your per-unit cost. One of the, I think, one of the items when you get to me, you'll ask for is a copy of a pro forma. There are no pro formas right now for the rental or the for sale. And that's something the board should ask for.
And you'll be reviewing it for us?
In only the most general way.
Okay.
Because that's not, you don't really review a pro forma in detail until and unless you're concerned that some of the conditions you're asking for could make the project unaffordable.
Keep going.
Okay. So my concerns are with the height of the building. We had then butters from the daycare come in and when this building was originally put here, they were reassured that they were going to be a much lower, much smaller building, they would have less of an impact on their business. Now that building's back, I don't know if they've been notified at all or given an opportunity to...
We've met with them.
This is the one.
And I don't, and I have an issue with 53-foot-high buildings.
Okay. Next.
Okay, as far as negative...
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure she was done. Next comment, if you have others.
No. Oh, rental in perpetuity. Are we talking, I'm not sure I understand what they're proposing. Are we talking about having the rental units of C be rental in perpetuity?
Buildings one and two will remain rental in perpetuity. Building three, they want the option of being able to convert it if the market demands it, if the finances demand it or what have you. But the numbers that they presented to us would keep us under the host community agreement with sufficient units to keep us, based on the assumptions that were made, safe until 2030.
I have a problem with those assumptions watching the growth rate in the last six months in Littleton. To say that we're only going to have 450 additional units in the next 10 years just doesn't...
Ideally, that would be shame on, shame on the projections we made, but ideally, that's plenty of time. We're good till 2020 anyway. That's plenty of time to get the housing production plan in place, right?
Okay. All right. So I guess...
We have obligations to work on affordable housing as a town in any event.
In my opinion, if we end up with four-story buildings, then I think they should at least all three of them be rent in perpetuity.
Okay. And...
Perpetual. How come I can't say that?
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity. Thank you.
Rod?
As far as negative impacts to the town, I don't think there's going to be any difference between the two proposals, so that doesn't bother me any. It was already mentioned that the buildings near the Griss Mill residence are going to be lower and that's a benefit. The twelve buildings are close to Nagog Park, so it again won't have that much of a negative impact. I don't believe in the Griss Mill people.
As far as building height goes, four feet out of 50 feet, to me, that's insignificant and it's not even worth really having that much of a debate. Secondly, there's a big benefit. Four stories versus three stories decreases the footprint substantially and, you know, gives you a little more green space and less impervious surface. I think that's a positive.
Thank you.
I want to talk more about it in the working session. I could be convinced.
You're talking eight, about eight percent.
I want us to be able to have a discussion on it.
Thank you. You done?
Yep. Oh, one other thing.
You're done?
I don't like the idea of giving them the option of going for sale in building three because if they do, we potentially in 2020 are going to be just over 10%. A few extra homes could drop us under 10%. What I'd rather do is see that, have them come back in the future if they want to make the change and then we'll decide at that time if it's appropriate.
Just to be clear, it would be a substantial change to go from rental to ownership and we would have that opportunity in any event. They have to come. So we don't have to put a perpetuity condition on it. We get it in any event.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have the arm strength though? The arm wrestling? If we don't put the clause in?
It will be the board then. I don't know if we'll all still be here in 2020.
I hope not, quite frankly.
It will be the board then that will have to...
I will have served my time.
Flex its muscle. Mr. Sossier, it's your turn.
Overall, I like this plan better than the previous one. It does have more ownership in it or has ownership in it. I think hopefully it'll attract people that, you know, will be like us who want to help out in the town and have more volunteers with some of these boards, which are less likely to do with people who are renting or more transient nature. Yeah, overall, the overall height of the project goes down another four feet on those large buildings, especially from what I understand has more to do with the roof line than anything else. So I don't really have a big problem with that. Yeah, discuss a little further the option to turn building three from rental to ownership. Not totally clear on the ramifications of that, but overall, I don't see any large objections to that. As far as the site home options, I think it's pretty straightforward. What is a little confusing, I think, is some of your tabs put X's in the wrong over. So it might be confusing to some people, but it seemed pretty straightforward to me.
I could have done a better job of explaining it and we did put it together quickly. So I apologize for that.
As far as being controversial, I'd like to apologize for the accusations that you wasted our time. I think we wasted a lot of your time with some of the things that we agonized over in previous meetings. I think if we keep our eye on the bigger picture as opposed to the location of a fence or two trees versus one, the next process will go a lot faster.
Thank you for that comment, Mark. Mr. Joyce, you asked me to recognize you.
Cities and towns all over the country are tearing down these high-rise, low-rent houses in favor of garden-style apartments. I have a problem with the, with the, with the high-rise building, this four-story. I'm also, I read the crime statistics in the Lowell Sun every day and I never see problems with the Littleton population. We live in a safe town. I'd like it to stay that way. If we allow people to rent in a four-room apartment, are we going to get quality tenants?
These are in terms of...
Littleton is a safe town. I want it to stay that way. And I'm against a four-story building. I think three is the maximum and let us concentrate on garden-style apartments.
I will just comment that we were at a meeting to discuss the chief, the police chief's functions going forward and the need for additional officers, et cetera. And if I'm not mistaken, Keith, he had some statistics of how many trips are likely to be generated by the, that many for-rent units coming online. So we'll get that comment, I think, from the police chief.
Yeah, we do have those statistics and, but they were based on 190 rental units.
Right. So we can maybe extrapolate from there, Patrick. Those are good comments. Okay. Bill?
One other thing that, when I get to earlier than did I quick get there. For sale, will they be restricted or maybe we need a discussion on being restricted to owner occupied? So that they don't get sold and then rented?
The, that issue is covered in regulatory agreement. It's the standard mass housing regulatory agreement for for-sale units that all the agencies use.
I think that applies only to the affordable units.
So you're asking are all the owners...
All the for sale to be restricted to owner occupied?
I don't think we'll agree to that.
Okay, well, bringing it up as a discussion that we may want to get to later on and resolve because right now, everybody keeps the under for sale and presuming, nine members here are applying 90 different presumptions.
I think the protection on that, the price of them is high enough that renting them is not a very practical alternative.
I've seen it. I've seen it.
I've got houses rented right now, $3,000.
Nor can you practically prevent a rental if someone is relocated for three years or whatever. So...
No buyer would be able to get a home except...
I understand that, but we're not going there. That was just a comment and we're adding it to the list of comments. Okay, I've gone around the board with comments. Now, Mr. Marchant, you wanted to...
I'll comment only in terms of, I think, additional information the board might want. I looked quickly at the landscape plan. I didn't see indication of sizes of tree or plant material or quantities. You normally ask for species, sizes and quantities and plenty of details. The comprehensive permit itself that was issued for the current project was a rental project. The minute you introduce for sale, you will need a number of additional conditions related to for sale. The desert models, I think we all need, or the board needs, printouts of those plans. I've already mentioned that I think the board should ask for a pro forma. Normally, you would have the benefit of a pro forma because it's a requirement for the PEL application. Here, and I agree with David Hale, mass housing doesn't want to be in the business of having to issue PELs with each change in a project. They will go through an extremely thorough and time-consuming, unfortunately, review in order to grant final approval. They will review a pro forma at that stage, but I think you should have one now and I think it's entirely appropriate for you to ask for one. I have some minor technical issues with the calculation of the affordable unit, but those are technical issues and I can just speak with the applicant directly on that.
That's it? Counsel?
Just one comment. I believe that the conversion of unit three, they're looking for the ability to do it without coming back to the board so that it's written into the decision that they can go take it out of its rental state.
Oh, so we wouldn't have an opportunity to address it the way it's written?
If it's written the way you're looking, that's right. That is our proposal and it's driven by local investors who would like to see that.
Was there a timeframe? Was it, was it, could it be immediate or was there a time period after which it would be allowed?
You know, I just flipped through and I couldn't find it.
There was no...
In the draft, there's no timeline. Could be exercised in any case.
Is there something for your subgroup to consider?
Consider, or the whole group to consider. Just, I've got it on my list of things.
Oh, one more comment. I don't know if there's a need for peer review, but if there is, you should discuss that sooner rather than later.
My reaction to this proposal, and I've made the notes already, is that we already got traffic, got a letter from traffic. I guess I should have read it in the record, but it wasn't here today. We'll read it at the next meeting. Letter from traffic where they said the traffic plan improves, doesn't get worse. There's a little, there's a very few more traffic trips per day at a little different hours when you have ownership versus rental. And offline, I asked Chief Kelly to comment on that. I will ask him to put something in writing on that, that he agreed with that traffic plan. So I didn't see need for traffic consultant peer review. And I've already asked the applicant to make sure that he does the drainage calculations because they will change with the surface, the roof runoff and the road changes. He's assured me that the crossing, the Wetlands Crossing doesn't change and that they'll have the letter from our consultant showing that those changes aren't going to be significant. So I really think we're pretty much down to the drainage calculations is the only place where we might want to have, I also think they improved, by the way, but I want the consultant to say that.
So what we've suggested is that the building permit be conditioned on a letter from the peer review graves saying that the drainage complies with stormwater, et cetera. So we're giving him a plan that's approved and he's working on a real plan.
And in terms of if we have any chance of meeting any deadlines and that's the only holdup, I've been told that that's perfectly permissible. Okay. Can you, let me just finish going around the room. So Tom, Chris, I imagine you don't have independent comment or do you want to? Okay. Roland, you're still...
I'm all set so far.
Keith, you have anything?
No.
And, everyone else left. So I guess we're around the room on comments. Would the applicant like to respond? Then I'm going to try to wrap it up.
I just wanted to say a couple things. We did, we did bring a pro forma to pass out to the board.
Let's do that now so we'll have it for the next meeting. Do you mind? Is that for the for-sale units or is that...
Just for the for-sale.
Just for the for-sale units. That's great.
And it's, you know, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a very general pro forma. We don't have a crystal ball as to, you know, which models were chosen, what size they'll be, what project will be. So this is, I guess...
Well, your timing is good because the market in Littleton has picked up dramatically in the last eight or nine months.
It seems like it. I've been through enough of these cycles to realize that...
It's always a cycle.
Fed stops tapering.
$1,000 to upgrade the...
Who knows?
If I may, rather than have you respond, I polled for your benefit so you could hear what the concerns were and for my benefit so I could see how much, how many areas of disagreement we seem to have at the table today. And I'm satisfied that the issues are fairly narrow for us to plan another meeting in short order. I would like to propose a continuation to next week. You would be prepared to respond to some of the things. As you heard, each member's singular opinion doesn't reflect the opinion of the many members. And as they were discussing on this side, maybe the height, maybe those who are opposed to the height could be convinced by other board members rather than by you of a feeling toward the height. So rather than belabor this any longer, it's getting on 10 o'clock and I know Mr. Bernier's got a long ride home.
Could I make one?
Yes, absolutely.
Just one suggestion, which is that as you look at the chart, which I did a really bad job of explaining, what I'd like to say is that where it says crawl space, walkout, whatever, our spec and what we presented to mass housing was that the spec is for a slab-on-grade unit, that everyone gets a slab-on-grade unit unless they choose an option. We are in an improving housing market, but it is a very competitive situation and people are going to stretch to buy these houses. So some people are going to say, you know what, I don't want to pay for that. And some people, same thing with a garage. They may say, I want this lot because I can put a garage on later. I can't afford it today. So that list is to be viewed in terms of what the basic spec is and everything else on there, basements, garages, all those things will be options and there'll be options at a specified price that will allow us to tailor the project to meet the market needs.
What you heard loud and clear from this board is that at some level, they don't want the affordable homes to be singled out from the street so that someone can drive by and say, "Those are affordables and they didn't get anything new with the markets."
We agree with that.
You heard that loud and clear. I probably did you a disservice by not letting you explain the chart because it wasn't legible and I thought we would bog down in it. But every member of the board has made a comment about where you're going to put your affordables, what they're going to look like and what amenities they're going to have compared to the markets. You need to go home and hear that and do something to convince the board about that. On every other subject, generally, the board was favorable. There's some four-story height restriction disagreement among board members and I think that all the comments are reasonable. And there's really not a whole lot of other concerns going on here. So as I said, I'd like to make a continuation hearing for next week. That would have been a regular meeting night anyway, so I trust that all board members will be available and we're not too close to the Christmas holidays to say that there's an inability...
Every day is 19.
I was hoping we didn't.
I know. The good news is we have no other hearings, right? So it would just be this. Hopefully, it'll be a shorter meeting.
Can we do 7:30 again?
So we can do 7:30 again.
I'll make sure my daughter has arrived.
And before we actually set that continuance in concrete, I would also like to see if the board agrees that the subcommittee to work on the decision ought to be the same subcommittee that worked before. And if I have my subcommittee members willing...
I think you should let us have the working meeting first so that we know what we're working on for a decision.
Doesn't matter because the subcommittee's not going to work on the decision. The subcommittee's going to meet to see if the draft decision contains all of the issues and where they might come back to the board at the working session and say, "These things are in the draft." Nobody's going to work on the, on the final decision yet. We're just going to get it ready.
So do you want a motion that you have the same subcommittee members?
Yeah, I think, if my same subcommittee is available, is it you and Jeff and myself?
No, I didn't. He said you and I.
Jeff, weren't you with us?
No, he was on the...
I was on the...
So it's just Bill and myself?
We need to, the...
Well, we need Bill, we need Bill for his attention to order. He's going to put it in order and I'm not detailing order. So yes, I'd like, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we form a subcommittee to review the proposed, call it final decision? Is that what we're calling it? Review the proposed final decision?
Draft decision.
Draft decision and report back to the board on the changes and details proposed. And I propose that, that committee be formed of Sherri Gould and Bill Farnsworth.
Any second to that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you get all that, Michelle?
Any opposed? Okay. The second thing I'd like to do is to have a notice posted to continue the hearing. Bill, pick a date to uncertain, please.
6:30.
Yes.
When is the date?
19.
19.
And more patient.
Continue to this, we'll be in here.
Are you going to move it? Do you need to make a motion to do it?
Motion to continue this hearing to December 19, 2013 at 7:30 PM.
In this building, probably this room. If not, it will be posted on the door if we need to change rooms. we need to change rooms. Second?
Attention to that motion? I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just want to comment whether you can reach out to the departments and boards to see if they want to make any comments by that night.
Sherri, Sherri, do you know when you're going to, the subcommittee's going to meet, are you going to meet, are we going to meet in the morning service?
Yeah, this day and minute, the subcommittee will pick a time and a place for me. We don't need to post it, we're on the tour, sorry. We need to post it.
You'll need to post it by tomorrow. What, the subcommittee?
Yeah, so we'll talk for a minute and decide that. Anyone else? How about a motion?
Motion to adjourn, 10 o'clock.
All in, second, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.